I'm trying to make it to where it admits everyone who comes in, but it's not letting me do that. We are going to go ahead and record the, this fair, just so everyone knows. Getting a few more people here, let's see. Okay, I think we can go ahead and begin. Everyone, I, my name is Angelique Rodriguez, and, oh, wait, hold on, I'm getting something. My name's Angelique Rodriguez and I work for the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. I am the Aging and Disability Resource Center Specialist. And I want to thank you all for joining us today. We've got quite a few presenters today with what we're really excited about. I'm glad that we're able to come together and let our community know what resources that we have available. I'm going to go ahead and pull up my slides here for us to see. And I'll be the first one presenting for the Area Agency on Aging. And then Community Action will go after me. Ms. Vicky's going to be presenting after I do. And then I will go in, in between presenters and just let you know who's going to be next. Although I did send a link out of our presenter list, I'll go ahead and just present everybody in between all that. So here we go. Can y'all see my slides? All right.
Yeah, we can see them.
Awesome. All right, so this is our Ignite the Connection Virtual COVID-19 Resource Fair. It is hosted by myself, Angelique Rodriguez. And our presenters today are going to be Area Agency on Aging, which I will do. Community Action Committee, Gulf Bend Center, Mid Coast Family Services, Texas Workforce Solutions, Rehabilitation Services, the City of Victoria, Texas Rio Grande, Legal Aid, United Way. And then afterwards, we'll have a question and answer portion. Now, I'm going to leave some time in between each presenter if you want to ask a question. So if you don't think of anything right away, don't worry. At the very end, we'll have another section for y'all to comment on if, if you couldn't think of anything right away. So, or to ask a question. Needs assistance. Right now, our Aging and Disability Resource Center have not been allocated funds yet for COVID-19, but our Area Agency on Aging has. So with that, the community needs that we have been seeing mostly and what we're going to be assisting with is rental, utility, grocery, prescription, transportation, and other needs are as case-by-case basis. So if you're not sure if we cover it, just you can give us a call. I'm going to have our contact information at the end. So if, if you're not quite sure what we're going to be... Can you see my slides? Oh, looks like my slides are not popping up. I mean... Something happened. Can y'all see them now, my slides? Getting a phone call. I don't know. I'm having technical difficulties here. I don't know why. Share content. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Okay, so, um, like I was saying, the Aging and Disability Resource Center is going to be receiving funds, but they have not yet been allocated. But our Area Agency on Aging has, and these are the community needs that we're going to be assessing, that we're going to be assisting with, excuse me. So other needs will be considered, and again, it's going to be case-by-case basis. The criteria and eligibility requirements for Area Agency on Aging is you must be 60 years of age or older. There could be a waiting list right now. They're pretty small. Some of them, there isn't a waiting list, but for some of the needs, it's very small. Prescription, it does require that we verify with the pharmacy. And of course, we don't give any money directly to the consumers. We give it to whatever company, as far as the pharmacy. We do the same thing with the utility assistance. We've got to verify the bill. We pay it directly to utilities company. Rental assistance, the same way we need to call for the rental company and pay directly to them. So we never switch money directly to the consumer themselves. I think most of us probably do that. We are doing gift cards right now for groceries. They're, they just need to give us a call. I've got our contact information here. There is the website. Our website is www.gcrpc.org. Our ADRC number is, it's easy to remember, 1-855-YES-ADRC, but written out, it's the number that you see there. Or you can contact me directly. I've got my email, my phone number and extension there, so if you have any questions. If you call the ADRC number, nine times out of 10, you're going to talk to me. So you can either call that line, or you can call my direct line with my extension on here. Was there, does anybody have any questions? You just got to remember to unmute yourself. No one has any questions? All right, let me... Here we go. And our next presenter is... And, um, what is this?
I see your screen. I see you now.
Okay.
Can't hear you, Vicky.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
And do you see the screen?
We can see your computer screen, but we don't see like a presentation.
It shows that it's up. Just a second.
Sometimes on Teams, you have to like reshare your screen if you go to something different.
Okay, hold on a second. Tiffany's working on it. Is it there now?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, good. All right, and you can see it and you can hear me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, first of all, I am Vicky Smith, the ED for Community Action. And thank you for allowing us, Community Action, to participate in this virtual fair. As you see, the, did the screen disappear?
Yes, it did.
Yes.
Okay, let me... We'll get it back up there. Give us a second. It says my presentation ended. That was pretty quick. Someone else has, oh, someone else has started sharing, it says. So we're, we're trying to pull it back up.
There we go.
Okay, all right, well, we'll try this again. But anyway, thank you. And you can see that Community Action's been around for a while. May 1965, it happened with the Economic Opportunity Act. I actually have not been here that long, but it has been here for a while. In response to our governor, related to the pandemic, a lot of businesses had to shut down. But CAC is declared an essential agency, so we were able to continue operations and serve the clients. We did have to implement a modified service delivery plan because we are still not seeing people face-to-face. We're trying to keep staff well so they can serve the population that needed, needs to be served. Community Action does receive federal, state, and local supplemental funds to assist clients affected by the COVID-19. And we do have a large area that we serve. You can see the counties there, and a little over 7,000 square miles of Texas that we have the responsibility to assist people in the various counties. And we have a very good relationship with each county. They are assisting us in serving their residents in their households. Our programs, our normal funding obviously has continued. We still have the same programs that we did have before the pandemic. But because of the pandemic, we have received these additional funds. The Community Services Block Grant, which is funded by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. That federal income guidelines is what they declare as their federal poverty income guidelines. And this is up to 200%. So we're allowed to service those households that have that high of an income, which is not the normal. The normal is just 120. So CARE has the households that we can serve. And for this program, you can see the list of services that we provide. Now, they do have to verbally declare that they are affected by the pandemic, by the COVID, in order for us to take care of these issues in their household. And this is all seven counties that we can take care of these medical care prescriptions and lack of area on aging. We have to actually go to the pharmacy, work with the pharmacy, they fill the prescription, and then they bill us. So we set up vendor's agreement with all of our agencies that we work with in order to pay for the client's needs. We do not give any funding or gift cards to the clients. And you can see, we actually help with internet services, and that's specifically with VEC. And if you know of anyone that has that internet service and is in need, we can actually, through VEC, pay for that, which is something new that we can do. Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission, we also received funds from them for additional COVID meals. And that's not people that had the COVID. It's for people that had to stay home because of the COVID. And our meal count increased by at least 40% because of the pandemic. It's also more than a hot lunch. It's a wellness check on these people. And we do keep our masks on. We keep our distance because we're trying to keep our meal transporters safe through this pandemic also. The City of Victoria, we receive our normal funding from them for the utility assistance, but we also receive some COVID funding from them. And the total, I think, is actually 34,000 instead of the 20,000. And this is just for the City of Victoria, and these are the services we can provide through that. The Emergency Food and Shelter Program, again, we have our regular funding from them, but they also sent us some CARES money to help with rental assistance. They have their own income guidelines. They have their own requirements. But we can serve Victoria County with this funding. It's the Emergency Shelter Grant. This is through Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This is for the very low income, and I looked, and for a family of, a household of two members, the income can be $16,400 a year. And then for each person added to that household, you add $2,050 that we can serve. This program is based on area median income. So all of our programs have different income guidelines, different documentation guidelines. And the ladies have to just keep up with what's needed and let the client know what they have to bring in. The eligible usage for this, you can see the list there. It's, it's an extensive list that we can provide services for, and we're happy to provide them. Our Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program, this is mainly the utility program. There again, we have our regular funding that we can help with those people that are not affected. But then we have the CARES that we received from TDHCA to help with those people that have been affected by the COVID. This income is 150% that we can serve. The clients are required to complete an application for all of our services and the different documentation they have to submit. It has been a little bit difficult because we're not doing the face-to-face, but we are working with them through, actually through a window at this point. Some of the programs have to have signatures, and so we're still having to do that. Our priorities, even with the CARES, our priorities are the elderly, disabled, and families with children five years and younger. That's the priority with our CARES money, and that's the priority with our regular funding. We can be contacted. You see our phone numbers up there, our fax number, our email address, and then we have our website up. The clients can complete the application, add the documentation, and submit it direct to us for us to print and serve. We've tried to make it as simple as possible across our service area so that we can actually get the applications and service those people that are in need. That's my presentation, Angelique.
All right, thank you so much, Vicky. Is that cacv.us?
No, no, there's, it's not supposed to have those last dots.
Okay.
You're right.
Okay, just want to make sure. All righty, well, thank you so much, Vicky. That was very informative. And does anybody have any questions for her right now?
This is Diana. Sorry. This is Diana. So my question is, is that if someone goes to you needing like electric payment assistance, and you pay them for the one month, that they're only eligible for one-time payment?
Uh, no, no. We base our payments on the previous year histories. We actually have to get the history from last year, and then we can pay, beginning in January, we can pay up to eight months payments. But with the CARES, the applications will have to be resubmitted, and it goes through July. So we possibly could pay seven months of utility bills.
That, that is some excellent assistance for our callers. I work for 211, and you know, I know it's not only our region, but there's, all the regions are suffering with, you know, not being able to pay their utility bills. So this is some really good news. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And we have a vendor agreement with, I would venture to say, all of the electrical companies because they're anxious to hear from us because they want their customers served through us. So we can tell the client, hey, call your utility company, tell them you're submitting an application. And normally, they can get an extension on their billing. So they work very well with us.
That is good information. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have a question also. Ms. Vicky, now when you say that you're COVID-affected, does that mean that they have to be, have been affected by, physically affected by the COVID virus? Or is it because of a loss of job because of COVID, you know?
Oh, yes, and it's loss of job. They're having to buy extra protective sanitation equipment. Some of the programs are just verbal statements from the client that they have been affected. Some of the programs, we have to actually show that they're drawing the disaster unemployment, or they lost hours. It's, it's not real difficult to prove because, you know, most people have been affected in some way or other, and we can accept that. Okay, okay. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Awesome. Does anyone else have any questions for Vicky?
This is Johanna. I have a question. About the internet service, so is that an enrollment? Is that, how, how extensive and how, what is the length of time you will provide assistance for internet service and the reach?
It's just with VEC customers, and I, to be honest, I don't remember how many months we can provide services for. I can get that information back to you. VEC's the one that set it up and is allowing us to use their specific funding that they give us for their customers. We can use their funding to pay for the internet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Ms. Vicky, hi, this is Roxy with the Victoria Housing Authority, next door.
Well, hi.
How are you doing? Good. I got on a little late this morning, so I apologize. But by any chance, could you send me your PowerPoint?
I'm sorry, I was getting my answer for Johanna. It's three months that we can pay for it, for the internet. Okay, Roxy, you asked me that question again, please.
If there's any way that you could possibly send me your PowerPoint?
Well, I'd love to, yes. I'll email it to you.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're muted, Angelique.
Well, if there's not any other questions, we'll go ahead and go to the very next presenter, which will be Gulf Bend Center. And I believe it's Dara. Dara, are you ready? Hi, I think you're muted. Let me see if I can unmute you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, great.
Okay, it's actually pronounced Dara.
Dara, thank you.
Dara, yes. Okay, so let me get my presentation ready. So I'm Dara. I'm with Gulf Bend. And we have a new program here, and it's called the Crisis Counseling Program. So it's the CCP program, although it should be called the CCCP program because it's a COVID program. There it is. Wait, can you see my presentation over here?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, okay. Let's see if I can make it bigger. Can we all still see it? Can y'all still see it? Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is our crisis counseling program, but it's, we better, we most like to call it a COVID crisis hotline. And so just to go through what we're going to talk about right now, is that, you know, we're going to talk about what is the CCP in a whole? And then what is the Gulf Bend CCP within ourselves? We're going to tell you like who's all a part of our team, just so we know like who you're going to be interacting with depending on what you need. And then just some stress management, some resources that we have, and how to get in contact with us here at Gulf Bend. Okay? So CCP, which is a crisis counseling program, is a grant program rewarded after a presidential disaster. And we received funds that come from FEMA and SAMSA that join together to create Texas Recovering Together. And those people, the Texas Recovering Together decide which mental facilities actually would benefit from having a crisis counseling program. And so that's how Gulf Bend received these funds from the state. Okay? WHOAREAS, that's Texas Recovering Together, and COVID-19 Counseling Program offers free short-term crisis counseling for individual families and groups living in Calhoun, DeWitt, Goliath, Jackson, Raffirio, La Baca, and Victoria County. This number that's on here, this is our hotline. It comes directly to a cell phone. So you're not going to be talking to a telemarketer or anyone else. You're going to be in direct contact with one of our crisis counselors. The hours of the phone number are Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. But I do encourage, like, if something's going on in the weekend, you know, feel free to call the crisis hotline number that Gulf Bend has, and you'll see that on a later slide. But also, if you're thinking that it's not, maybe it's not a big deal, I do encourage people to leave voicemails because they will listen to those voicemails, and we will return phone calls as well. So this is our team. So our team leader is Tracy Chase. She's not here today because Tracy wears a million hats. But I'm one of the crisis counselors, so that's me, Dara Butler. And then all of our marketing that you see around, or if you hear about us, that's from Jessica. Casey is our financial advisor. She does more behind the scenes. And then Bethany is also another one of our crisis counseling, crisis counselors. But she only comes in if like we're feeling really overwhelmed, but we do have backup if needed. Things that we offer through this program is individual counseling. We give basic supportive information to people who are just kind of overwhelmed and freaking out because of COVID right now. We also do group counseling. And then of course, right now, we do public education, which is what we would consider this as. We do community networking and support. We do assessments. We do, we give out educational information to people, to schools. For anyone who's asking for it, we'll find what we can. And then you'll see us in the media a lot, too. I know we have billboards out. We have radio ads out. We had a spread in the newspaper recently. And we have a bunch of, we have flyers everywhere as well. So these are all things that we offer to people who call the hotline. The goals of our CCP are to just to help people recover and rebuild their lives after, you know, a disaster happens. But right now, we're in a pandemic, and so things are just, we don't know when things are going to get back to normal. So we're just trying to help reduce as much stress as possible, give out as much correct information to the, to our callers that call. All of our information is either going to come from the state itself, or it's going to come from like the FEMA hotlines, or it's going to just come from information-based like through the state. It's not going to come from secondhand information that a lot of people have seen out there. So we just want to talk about some stress management that's been going on like because of COVID. You know, we want to really encourage people to, you know, practice good self-care, you know, focus on what makes you happy, and just focus on the positives in your life and not the negatives. We want you to just keep getting out there and moving around, even if it's just, you know, walking around the block of your house, or even just walking around your house itself. Just walk around the perimeter of your house. We want you to stay socially distant, but also connected. You know, use your technology as you can. Or if you don't know how, ask someone who does so you can still stay connected to your family. If you're working from home, you know, work by a window, some sunlight, you know, step outside every now and again so you don't feel so enclosed. And of course, if you're just feeling completely overwhelmed, there is professional help out there. There's any, there's amount of help for anybody who needs it. And we were, we were more than happy to be that, that bridge. So like if you need information on something, we're more than happy to find it for you. We want to make sure that everyone knows where the COVID testing sites are in the area. So I just want to leave it on the screen for a little bit. I don't want to read it all. But this is from the Victoria Advocate itself. It tells you where to get tested in Goliath, Jackson, La Baca, DeWitt, Calhoun, and Victoria County. And of course, you can pull this up from their website, but if you need that link, I'll be happy to give it to you. But these are just all testing sites in the Crossroads area. And then this is how you can get in contact with us. We have a Facebook, we have Twitter, we have Instagram, we have, you know, the Gulf Bend website. But of course, that phone number is the best way to get in contact with someone from the CCP itself. And then these are just other CCPs in the area. So if you know someone who, who may not be in Victoria County or the counties that we serve, but you're really interested in getting them into like a CCP so they can talk to someone. These are all the CCPs that are in the state of Texas everywhere. So there's plenty of them, so I don't want to like stay on one side too long. But there's more than... But there's more than enough for people if y'all are looking for something else out there. Okay? And then that's, that's pretty much all we have to talk about. So we really don't offer funds to people. We don't offer money, but we do like to give just basic information and to just basically give as much support as we can to everybody.
Well, I think that's very important. Thank you so much for that, Dara. There is a lot of people out there who are suffering, I think that maybe need counseling and assistance, and I think it's, it's great that what y'all are doing, it's going to help a lot of people, especially coming around the holidays. This is, you know, this adds extra stress with the pandemic, and so I think that's great. Thank you so much for that. Does anyone have any questions for Dara?
Hi, this is Johanna again. Thank you, Dara, for that information. I was wondering, can you post in the chat the link to the testing sites? That's something that we can make sure is in our 211 database and compare, and just make, like, make sure that we've got all that stuff entered.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to post that for you. And I would also like to give you the, the link to the different CCPs as well, just so, like, if someone's just thinking about it, they have that available as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, and if no one has any other questions, we'll go to the next presenter, and this is going to be Midcoast Family Services. Lisa Griffith, are you ready?
I am ready.
Awesome.
Let's see if I can share this little guy here. Can you see that?
No.
Not yet.
All right, let's see what I got. Let's see. Try to get it in here.
See the box with the arrow that points up next to the leave on the right hand?
I'm trying to upload this, but I don't, it wasn't letting me earlier, and I wondered if it was because someone else was on. Can you see it now?
No.
All right, so let's see. I'm trying to share it. It says there are no files available. And even when I upload it, it just doesn't love it. So...
The way, I mean, I don't know how you did it, but the way I did it is I just pulled it up regular on my computer, and then I hit Share Content, and clicked on it again, and it popped it right on up.
Okay, let me see if I can do that.
Real quick, while we're trying to figure that out, I don't have a chat box on my thing to share the link, so I don't know how to get that information to her.
If you email that out, we can, we can distribute it for you. If you just want to, Angelique, the links.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
Yeah, I'd love to have the PowerPoints for all of these, please.
Absolutely.
Don't know how to get this now?
No, but Lisa, if you want to email me, this is Johanna, I can share it for you if you'd like.
Okay, let me do that real quick. I mean, I have the share, but let me see if I can just email it.
I have a quick question for Vicky, if she can come back on.
Yes.
Yes, Vicky, have a question. On that internet service, do, for Infineam, do they still have to, do they currently have to have it, or can they thing when they come on? Do you know?
I don't know, but I can sure check with them, and I, I'll get back with you on that.
Okay, I appreciate it, Vicky. Thank you.
All right, Johanna, I sent it to you. Did you get it yet? If not, I'm a good talker.
I keep refreshing my email and hoping, so...
Okay, my staff is letting me know that it can, VEC can be a new service.
Oh, awesome.
For the internet, so they will just have to fill out an application with community action.
Awesome.
Thank you for asking.
So sorry for the delay. I keep refreshing my email, and as soon as it comes on, but if there are any other questions, Lisa, do you mind if we go to the next person and then come back? When I get that, okay.
Okay. So the next one on the list is Texas Workforce Solutions Rehabilitation Services. Megan, are you ready to present?
Hi, everybody. I think so. We'll try as well. The system is being a little funny today, so I don't have my full PowerPoint. Let's see. So I just have this one, one screen, so I'll just talk with you today about our services. I just want to make sure that everybody knows who we are. If you guys remember, we've had several name changes over the past 10 or 15 years. We used to be Texas Rehabilitation Commission, TRC, and then we changed about 10 years ago or more to DARs, Department of Assistive and Rehab Services. And now our official name is Texas Workforce Solutions Vocational Rehab Services. It's very long. We are now under the umbrella of Texas Workforce. And so, but we are, basically, we are, we are, well, we are still the same program that we've always been, vocational rehab services. And we serve people. We don't have any special funding or special program for COVID, but we are still here and serving people with disabilities in finding employment. So we are totally working from home, but we are serving our customers virtually. So we don't have staff at the office. They're on Navarro. Our, we are in separate offices right now from the Texas Workforce Solutions Office. We are still in the same office that VR Services has always been in on Navarro. Later this year or early next year, we, we will be co-locating with Workforce Downtown, but we're not there yet. But the best way to get ahold of us is to call the office phone number, 361-580-5700. And what you will have to do is to leave a voicemail message, and you can just leave it in the general mailbox, and then someone will call you back. I know that's, it's not great right now, but that is, that's the best way to get ahold of us. The other information on the screen is a 512 number, because we do serve all of the state of Texas. So the Victoria office serves the seven surrounding counties, Gonzalez, La Vaca County as well, and Refugio County, Beville in addition, and Kingsville. But if you're looking at any other of the counties in Texas, you would call that 512 number, and they, you would give them their, your zip code, and they could look up the office number of the, the office that covers that county. So basically, what we do is we help people with disabilities go to work, if, if that disability is getting in the way of finding work. One of the things that I want to make sure that y'all understand is that the, when we talk about a disability, it's not necessarily a disability that qualifies you for Social Security disability. It is any physical or mental health issue that is causing problems with working. It could be a hearing loss. A lot of times, people with hearing loss don't think they have a disability. They think, I just need hearing aids. But that does qualify them for assistance, potentially, as long as working is the goal. Also, learning disabilities, kids in school. We do work with students, starting around 14 years old, on planning for their transition out of high school. And those students can have learning disabilities, ADHD, autism, or beyond the spectrum, and we help work with them on transitioning out of high school, whether that's into a further educational program or directly into employment. There is no top-end age that we can work with. As long as you're wanting to work, we can work with you and assist in dealing with that disability.
Awesome.
Anybody have any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Okay, well, if y'all think of anything, again, we're going to have a question and answer portion at the end. So if you think of anything, just let us know. Thank you so much for that, Megan. It was very informative. We appreciate you coming on and giving your presentation. It was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Megan, I do have a question. I, I work with the diabetes, and I, my question is, we've referred a lot of people to you, you know, and you've been a great help to them because they've called us back and told us, you know, hey, thank you for referring us, you know, to them. They were able to, y'all were able to assist them. But I have also had a few calls on people who have insurance, but they have a high deductible, or, you know, at this time, they can't afford, you know, so, and they are currently working, but, you know, with their insurance situation, do you help them? Like, if they, they have something that's going on, you know, that they need, they have a disability that's preventing them from doing their, you know, full job, do you have something to help them to, with, with, with the deductible or with, you know?
Well, we don't have, like, a special program that just helps with deductibles. We go through the whole process for everybody to see if they meet our eligibility guidelines. And if it works out that us assisting them, paying that deductible would benefit them and help them keep, maintain their employment, then that is a possibility.
Okay, okay. Because I always thought that, you know, since if they have insurance, you know, I didn't know whether I could refer them to you or not, you know?
Now, we do, you know, we're not a long-term program. We're not a medical management program. We are, you know, kind of targeted. So, you know, if it's, if, say, someone needs a specific kind of treatment or surgery, we, and they, yeah, they need help paying that $2,000 to get that surgery, then yes, we can, we can pay that.
Okay, that's very good to know, because there's so many people out there right now who, who have been cut back on their jobs, you know, or, you know, they're not, their spouse is not working or something, you know, so it makes it harder, and they need a surgery to, you know, to do the job, you know?
Now, one thing that I didn't say is income is not part of our eligibility guidelines. We are only, there's three questions that we ask for eligibility. Do you have a disability, physical or mental? Is it affecting your ability to go to work, or keep a job, or advance in a job? There are three kind of qualifiers there. And do you want to work? And if we answer yes to all three of those, then you're, could, you could be eligible for services. We do look at income when we go get ready to pay for something. So we, we work on a sliding scale at that point, as far as, you know, if you do have a decent income and you're over income guidelines, then you might have to pay something towards the cost of the services, but we could contribute as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
I have a question, Megan. This is Johanna.
Hi.
Does, for disability, does mental health come into that? Do you guys help provide people with resources for mental health so that they can continue to work?
Yes, what we try to do is to get them connected to the community resources, to, like, Gulf Bend. But sometimes, like, if there is a waiting list and they can't get into one of the community resources, we can get them started in some mental health counseling. But like I said, it's kind of a limited program because we're not a long-term services program. So we can get started on some things, and then they get them connected into other programs.
Thanks.
Does anyone have, anyone else have any questions for Megan?
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are, we are here, and we are still around, and we are providing services at this time, but we are not in our offices.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. Our next presenter, oh, Johanna, did you get a?
Yes, I'm ready.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much. So we will go back with Lisa, if you're ready.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Great. So this is Lisa from Midcoast Family Services, and I'm specifically talking about coronavirus assistance programs. So Johanna, if you'll go to the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit about our homeless rapid rehousing program. We got dollars to help people get into housing if they are literally homeless. And I'm putting some additional kind of specific information here, so that if you guys want to just take a screenshot, you can have this for your clients when they get ready to come in and do an application. So basically, they have to be coming from the streets, a shelter, or a place that's not a habitable place to stay. And we can help them with their application fees, security deposits, rent assistance. For up to about six months, we can do that. What I will tell you is that they're responsible for locating the apartments that they want to try to rent, and then those apartments do also have to be meeting the fair market rent rate, which I'll have on the next slide. I'll tell you a little bit more about it for the different counties. And just want to let you guys know that they will need to contact us each month to let us know that they still are having hardship, or there's some other thing that's going on that requires them to need additional assistance. So they can pick up an application at our offices, which are, you know, downtown 111 South Liberty, or we can apply. So that we can explain exactly what paperwork we need and the documentation that gets attached to that before it will actually be accepted as a complete application. And then basically, once you've found a place, which can admittedly, that finding an apartment can take about a month or so. Once you've found an apartment, you've brought in your application, and we can see that, yes, that apartment needs eligibility, and we'll start then getting, you know, a habitability inspection and some other things done. It takes about two weeks for us to get through all that documentation, signatures, and a check out to the people that we're trying to help. So Johanna, if you'll go to the next slide, I also want to tell you that we do have some emergency shelter services. Those are available to people who are not able to get into any kind of a regular shelter that's available right now. So, for example, they don't meet eligibility requirements at Salvation Army. That would mean that they're female, so they can't get in there. They've tried to get in. These funds are for temporary and emergency services, so they're not, you know, very long-term. But basically, anyone who's in a high-risk population for coronavirus, or who needs to quarantine or recover, can be assisted with a brief hotel stay. Agencies can refer those folks over to us, and we'll do a quick assessment and verify that they are eligible. We do not require an ID, but most hotels do require an ID, so that's one barrier that I wanted to let you guys know people may have. In the past, if they have a family member who's willing to put an ID down on that hotel room, we'll still pay for the hotel room, but they, they're going to need some sort of an ID to get in. So that's just something I wanted you guys to be aware of. And then we pretty much put them in as soon as we can get them verified and eligibility, you know, processed. So if we'll go to the next one, this is that fair market rent, yeah, go on, yeah. This is the fair market rent rates for each of the counties, and if you want to screenshot that, then your folks that you're getting ready to, you know, send out, looking for apartments, will have an idea of about how much they can spend on an apartment. I did want to let you guys know, these fair rental rates would be, like, all bills included. So for example, in Victoria, at the bottom, if you wanted a one-bedroom, and all bills were paid, $8.37, and still be considered fair. If your lease says that you will pay utilities in addition to a rent of $8.37, it's going to be over fair market rent rate. So those utilities are going to need to be factored in, and with the utilities plus the rent, it can't be more than $8.37. We do have some waivers, and as long as they're reasonable, we can try to help people get in. All right, so Johanna, next slide. These are for folks who are not literally homeless, according to HUD, but most likely, they feel like they're homeless. They have maybe a place to stay for tonight, but don't know where they're going to stay tomorrow. They are, have an eviction pending. They may be living in another household because of economic reasons, or have moved from household to household to household, and those are the sort of folks that we can help with the prevention program. This will require some sort of a written eviction, and that can be from a family member, or it can be from a landlord. And we can document how many times you've been in different households within a certain amount of time as well. We don't need an official eviction from the, apply. And again, we can help people with their fees, their security deposits, any rental arrears, and some rental assistance. The applicants need to be at or below 50% of the area median income, and I'll have a slide with those numbers on it for you next. And we can... And we can help them for up to six months, as long as we continue to document that hardship for them again. We also will require for homeless prevention, some sort of proof of income, and that can be the proof that they have no income. And about six months of bank statements, if they have a bank account. If you don't have an account, that's not an issue. And again, we'd like for people to either call or come by to pick up an application so that we can explain that application process to you. And then, basically, once we get everything approved and inspection's done, then we will be about two weeks out before the check will be ready to go. So let's go to that next slide. This is what 30% of the area median income is for these different counties. And again, if you want to screenshot this, you'll have it, but you can see that, you know, it's not a very high number. But we also have sort of a 50% area median income waiver, which is the next slide. So if you want to swap to that, that can also be used if we need to. So, we can go as high as, you know, for household of four, $34,400 for household income. And we'll be going by basically the last couple of months of income, because we understand that, you know, you may have been making good money before coronavirus, but now you're at 25% or 50% of what you used to make, and so that's where the struggle's coming in. One more slide down, I think. So, I know that people have questions about specific situations. Sometimes people are living in a hotel until their money runs out, and then they're on the streets. So basically, what we're gonna do is ask you where you slept last night, and we're gonna complete your application based on that, that answer. And then when we're done with that, we're gonna do everything that we can to get you into a, can be lengthy, it can be hard to find a rental that's affordable, it can be hard to just get all of the documents signed when we're not all working at our offices and we're getting things back and forth. But please know that our goal is to spend every last dollar here in Victoria and to help people to the fullest extent possible and as quickly as possible. But I will tell you, we have a lot of people in need, and those services, it feels much slower than it has in the past, and of course, people are just as desperate as they've ever been to get the help that they need. So, one more slide, Johanna. Any questions about any of those things that I've gone over? If you guys have any, I'm happy to answer them.
This is Diana Rodriguez with 211 Texas again. I did refer a gentleman there, I want to say last month, and he was told that y'all were out of applications, so.
I don't know what that's about. We, we do have applications. I think at one point last month, we weren't taking any new applications because we had such a backlog that they're, you know, if you take them, that they're just gonna sit for a bit, and we want people to know that it's gonna be a couple of weeks before you get to your application. So maybe that was just a miscommunication. But we don't really ever, you know, we're not out of funds, we have funding, we continue to take applications, but we were, we were having a backlog as we tried to get fully staffed and get those going. And like I said, that process is pretty lengthy. You know, you'll get an application turned in to us, we'll go over all the eligibility, and we may be in contact with you three, four times, just trying to make sure that everything that you need to have is actually in that packet. Of course, we try to find that when you come in and drop it off, but if you're emailing things in, sometimes there's, you know, a couple of different times that we need to get in contact, we need to get things done.
Yeah, the gentleman, he's still homeless. So, if I happen to, you know, speak with him again, I'll just refer him back to you.
Yes, that sounds perfect. And we have just one regular number at MidCoast, but he can ask for me personally, and I'll help him with that.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Lisa? If there are no other questions, thank you so much, Lisa. That was very informative. Thank you for presenting.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. And we will go to the next presenter, which is the City of Victoria. Vanessa, are you ready? Think you might be muted. I see you. Vanessa, can you hear me? Oh.
I hear this weird little tapping, do you guys? I'm hearing something. But it's not. Maybe. Let me try to see if there's anything here.
I can hear that little fluttering sound in the background.
Yeah, I can hear it now. I.
And then it sounds like someone's breaking up.
Yeah. Vanessa, you might want to try leaving and then coming back in. Because it looks like the connection is, is bad. Mute, and then unmute. Let's see. Gonna try and look for, I think she got out. Just gonna get back in. Yes. She's coming back. I can see her background. You're muted. Let me unmute you.
No, now she's muted. There she is.
Yeah, something's going on with the audio. I guess. Well, let's see, let's give it a little bit of time, maybe it'll correct the issue. I'll give you a little bit of time to, to see if you can work with that, Vanessa. We'll go to the next one, then we'll come back, okay? All right. Okay, so, the next person we have on the list is Texas Real Grand Legal Aid, is Deena here, ready to present?
Can you hear me, Angelique?
I sure can.
Okay. Let me see, I'm having tech issues this morning and bad internet connection too, but I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'm Deena Hardwick, I'm a staff attorney with Texas Real Grande Legal Aid. I'm in the Victoria office, and I'm gonna share some information with you all about our services. Like many of you, we're here, we're working, but we're not physically in our offices. Everything we're doing is remote right now. Let me see if it will pull up my screens to share with you all.
I can hear it.
Can y'all see our website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, Texas Real Grande Legal Aid, we are the largest legal aid provider in Texas and the third largest in the nation. We are primarily funded by the Legal Services Corporation, which is a federal agency that funds legal aid throughout the nation. And we also receive quite a bit of our funds from the Texas Access to Justice Foundation, and that was created by the Supreme Court in 1984. As money comes down from the federal level, we receive, you know, different funding for different projects. We received, you know, money after Hurricane Harvey, now with COVID CARES Act money. We have 45 different practice areas, so we have attorneys that specialize in pretty much every civil legal problem you can imagine. We also have public defender offices as well. If you look down here, it talks about special programs for special client populations. One that I want to point out is Texas C-BAR. Through Texas C-BAR, we were able to pair up the Victoria County Long-Term Recovery Group with a pro bono law firm out of Houston, and they were the ones that closed on all of the homes for the Hope Meadow Project. So, any of the nonprofits that are on here today, if you think you might have a, you know, an issue that requires pro bono attorneys, or the actual nonprofit needs legal assistance, reach out to us because you might be able to qualify through C-BAR. That's a special project of ours. But, let me go on. So, our services are income-based. You have to apply for a case. Your case will be reviewed by an attorney if it is, you know, deemed that you qualify for our services. Each application that comes through is assigned to an attorney, where I'll take different rotations being on duty. I might be on duty for wills and trusts, I might be on duty for housing, somebody might be on duty for family law cases, but every application that comes through is reviewed by an attorney, and if we can help, we will help. If we can take it on for extended services, we will. It might just be counsel and advice. We might point you in the direction of self-help pro bono services, and that's what I'm gonna talk about in a second for our specific, for our, to our COVID funding. But, in order to qualify for our services, you need to give us a call. There's the 1-800 number, Monday through Friday. If your applicant doesn't get through, encourage them to continue to call, call, call. If they cannot get through to that number, I'm gonna share with y'all, and I will send this over to Angelique. Here's my local direct number. If it's a case here in our region, a lot of times I can reach out to a paralegal and ask them to do an intake. And sometimes you're able to bypass. Obviously, it's best if they go through the 1-800 number, but there will be different community partners that'll reach out to me and say, hey, Deena, I have this applicant that's really been trying to get through, especially if they're located here in Victoria or some of the contiguous counties, and I can try to get a paralegal to, you know, get on the line with them and go ahead and do an intake, especially if it's an urgent matter. That's our application number. We were just looking at our website, but that's my direct number. Leave me a message, I will certainly give you a call back or send me an email. I might be able to help you, I might be able to point you in the right direction, or I will certainly get you to the person that can get the applicant through the process. So again, we're working remotely right now. Our office is located downtown. We hope to eventually be back in the office when it is safe. Like some of the other speakers were saying, you know, it can sometimes be lengthy doing everything remotely, getting things signed, or getting them faxed, or emailed, but we will, you know, go above and beyond to get the information that we need. So if somebody applies with us, they normally have to fall below the 125% level of the federal poverty guidelines. In limited circumstances, we will assist clients up to 200%. And once somebody goes through the intake process, we'll have a little bit better idea. One of the main things that we're seeing right now due to COVID, obviously, is eviction and rental issues, like a lot of you have been talking about. So, if you have somebody come to you that asks questions about legal aid, if they are able to access the internet and get on our website, there are a lot of resources, self-help, education resources, forms, whatnot, every, every kind of thing that you can imagine that has to do with the law is on there. But, specific to accessing our resources, those are some of the different types of cases that we take. I've been heavily involved in disaster relief and then wills and estates cases. Many, many, many people that work for us are bilingual, and if it is a language outside of Spanish, we can certainly find somebody to translate in somebody's native language as well. So that's our general flyer for how to call in and see if you qualify for our services, and I will send all this over to Angelique, so she will have it. We have some information specific to the eviction moratorium. I will send this over to her as well. It's very lengthy, it's very detailed, but a lot of the people that are calling in that need housing advice or are trying to prevent eviction, some really good information for maybe you all on the call to, you know, print it, have it on your desk, have it saved on your computer, and you can kind of point people in the right direction. Encourage them to make an application with us, especially if they're facing an eviction. As you can imagine, we're staying really, really busy with housing cases, eviction prevention, and then a lot of wills and estates cases. Unfortunately, people have lost a lot of family members unexpectedly due to COVID, so they're talking about needing a will, needing to get a will probated, or how to access bank accounts, or how to transfer property now that they've had a family member pass away unfortunately due to COVID. A main project that we have going on right now, we have a press release on our website. The three legal aids in Texas, along with the Texas Access to Justice Foundation, have launched an online toolkit called Stop Texas Evictions, and I'm going to take you to that website right here. So, there's information in English and in Spanish, and this is actually meant for a client, an applicant, who is somebody who's facing eviction right now, and they can go through the toolkit, and it's gonna ask them some questions, it's gonna give them some information. It might be forms that they can fill out themselves to give to the court, maybe to ask for more time, maybe to actually show that they can't be evicted right now because there's a moratorium, or, you know, just all kinds of different things. But they're gonna go through there, and they are going to click through, and it's gonna answer the various questions for them, and then they're gonna, eventually, if they want, they can also apply for our services. But it gives everybody just what's the most up-to-date information right now about eviction. The Texas Eviction Diversion Program is only in certain counties right now, but it's supposed to be expanded after January 21, and that is, you know, federal money that's come down and then be set aside by the state in order to help. And I'm sure a lot of us are all kind of, you know, working from some of the same similar pots of money because of the CARES Act. And right now, like I said, anything that has to do with eviction and housing is our, is our main focus as far as COVID. However, we do see clients in every kind of, you know, practice area that you can imagine that has been impacted by COVID. So they will get priority whenever they call in, if somebody has, you know, a legal issue that's come up because they have been impacted by COVID. Unfortunately, you know, we've seen domestic violence cases increase, a lot of family law issues, and then like I was talking about a second ago, wills and estates issues because we've had, you know, so many people unfortunately pass away. That's all I have for y'all, and I will certainly get all this information shared and sent on over.
Awesome, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for her?
I have a question. What is the current date for landlords to be able to legally evict a renter now?
The date continues to get pushed back. I would have to take a look at it and send that out to you. The Supreme Court keeps coming out with, you know, additional, additional timelines. I believe right now it's set for December 31st is when the moratorium is supposed to end, but that's subject to change. So, we're expecting if the December 31st deadline stays and that moratorium ends, then we expect that there will be a flood of, obviously, evictions that will be able to move forward in the courts after January 1st. And that's one of the reasons why we're trying to direct so many people to that Stop Texas Evictions website, so that people can go ahead and start lining up what they need to do. I've, I've worked on several evictions here recently that were unfortunately not even related to COVID, but, you know, family members passed away and people are in a disagreement about ownership of the home and trying to evict each other, and then, obviously, the courts are kind of overwhelmed too with people for non-payment of rent. So, just know that if you go to do anything in any of the local JP offices right now, it's, they're feeling a little overwhelmed as well with all the additional cases.
Thank you so much for that. We appreciate you sharing, it's a lot of great information. And again, if, if no one has any questions right now, we'll have another question and answer portion at the end of the event. So thank you again. And Vanessa, you wanna pop on and is your, see if your audio's working?
Okay, so working now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, let me share this content. Okay, are y'all seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, as you all know and have heard, there's other agencies that are also doing rental mortgage assistance. The city is also, through the CARES Act, doing rental mortgage assistance, but this one is for a 51% to 80% median household income. But the requirements are they must live in the city of Victoria, so that one is a little different because CAC can do county. You have to live in the city limits for ours. You need to demonstrate a financial hardship due to COVID. Between the 51% to 80% for 2020 income limits, not receiving assistance from another agency, you know, that runs into the federal funding and duplication of benefits, and we are really trying to prevent that from happening. We're already seeing a couple of those duplications starting to occur. We did kind of find a way we can work around that. So, say someone was served only three months from either MidCoast or CAC, and now it's been some time since those three months, and they didn't get the full six months of service, then we could finish out the other three. Again, that's with all of our agencies working together to make sure that we're doing that. So we're trying to prevent having to go that route, but we're also at the same time seeing such a high need for assistance right now that we're, you know, trying to help as many people as we can. So we're trying to find those ways that we can do that. The other requirements are providing a required ID documentation, proof of hardship, and those have varied. We're accepting, you know, say, the person cleans homes for a living and doesn't feel comfortable going into and doesn't feel comfortable going into homes anymore due to COVID, and they have someone at home that has an underlying condition. That is a proof that for COVID-related reasons that they cannot work. That, that is something that we're accepting, those type of situations. Or, um, we're having a lot of, uh, family members that are having to also stay home now and not take a job because their children are all now being, um, either quarantined or having to learn remotely. So there's no one to take care of their children. They can't get a job. And, uh, there's only maybe one person in the household working. And so that is another requirement that we can accept. Uh, we will need their lease agreement or their mortgage statement. We will need the proof of income, check stubs, SNAP, SSI, bank statements, uh, past three months for bank statements and check stubs, unemployment letters, child support, any form of income that is coming in. And that's one of the things for our program that we're really having to stress to our clients. Uh, you know, I think sometimes for other programs, since if you do zero to 30%, you, they might not be trying to show everything that's coming in. We need everything possible that could be coming in. Even if, say, there's a family member that's helping out the applicant by giving them gifts of $100 a month, having a letter signed from that, their family member that's saying, I give so-and-so $100 a month, and we can see it in their bank statements as a gift that helps get them to that income limit that we need to have to, for that 51 to 80%. They must first complete the survey on our website, which is at www.victoria tx.gov/covidassist. We're getting a lot of phone calls because people aren't committing, completing that survey first. And so we have to redirect them to that survey because that kind of helps us make sure that they're meeting the requirements. And they fill out that survey, then they go, then we get those surveys. Once we get those surveys, the city contacts the client. Here are the 2020 income limits for the 51 to 80%, depending on the household. Uh, this has also been a little confusing for some of our clients, understanding that they need to put everyone. So if there's, they might sometimes only put two people because it's only two people that are working, but yet there's three children in the household. We're trying to get them to understand this is for the entire household, including even those that are not working. That's how many people live in your house. Um, the city of Victoria will contact those that qualify from the survey and will be given an application. We are sending those via email right now. It's a fillable application form. And it also has the required documentation, um, that's also emailed out to them. We do have hard copies that they can come and pick up. Uh, we're just trying to prevent, and we are still in our office, but we're trying to prevent a lot of people coming through. So we haven't really encouraged that one as much. But, uh, for those that don't have access to a computer or anything like that, we are, uh, doing the hard copies. Um, we have been swamped, honestly, with the amount of applications. Our first round was over 300 people that committed, completed the survey. And then I emailed out all the 300 people that we had gotten from the first rounds of surveys. And we're now getting all the applications in. So we've been doing about five to six people a day for intake. Um, I have talked to Vicki and Lisa a couple of times, sending people that do not meet our requirements over to them. Um, we're, um, you know, we're hitting a little bit below the 50%, which we're really trying to prevent. But we do have affidavits that we're having the landlord sign so that, uh, we're making sure if there is a duplication of benefits and the landlord isn't responsible. So the landlord is also signing that their tenant is not receiving assistance from any other services. Um, so it kind of gets multiple people involved to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. Our budget for the first round on, uh, for rental assistance and mortgage assistance was $40,000. We've helped about 18 households with that. And we are going to city council on December 1st to ask for them to approve a second round of 144 because of the need that we're seeing. Um, and we are expecting it to get worse, uh, after December. Uh, ours, our funds also, they can get up to six months of $4,500. Right now, we've given only a couple of those, all the, the full six months because some of them have received jobs. So we're making sure that we cover them for if they're back payments and then a couple of months, two to three months forward, just depending on what they are needing. And, um, they do not have to report to us every month. They can reapply. So if we only gave them three months, they can reapply for another three months if they're needing that. Um, before I go to questions, uh, we are also, this is our, the main program right now that the city is actually running. Uh, you know, the CDBGCV funds are also given out to our other agencies in the, in Victoria. And our CDBG funds are also given out. So we're having to run both programs right now. And, um, it, it's been a little bit of work. But we are going to counsel with the proposal to also give, um, funds for birth certificates and IDs to start helping those that are LMI or homeless that are needing shelter and needing to get into rapid housing and, uh, have the identification. So that will also be another one that the city will be doing after December 1st. There's also the flu vaccines that, uh, the program that's going on right now. And that's for low to moderate income in the homeless. And we should have another couple of pop-ups in December. Um, and I think that's it so far. I know this one's a little short and sweet, but as I said, we've been, we've been doing a lot of intake. So I have a couple of people waiting soon for more, uh, applications and for more rental assistance. But if y'all have any questions, uh, feel free to ask now or can always email or call me.
I have a question, Vanessa. If someone was to turn in an application today to you and everything, I know that it'll take a while for y'all to process and everything. But does, can you give a rough estimate time for, I don't know if the check goes to the landlord or if it goes to the recipient, you know, the client along that way? If you could, uh, give us a rough estimate time?
Sure. Right now, it's taking us about, I, I've been getting in the clients in at least a little. So if they turn in their application on Monday, I normally, I could get them in by Friday. Um, and then after that, they bring a vendor setup form to their landlord and their W-9, and the landlord faxes that back into us or emails it back into us, however they, they prefer. And then that goes into our finance department. So it takes about another week before their, the funds are put into the landlord's bank account. Giving any funds to the tenant. It goes straight to the mortgage company or straight to the landlord. And we also, the landlord and our mortgage company and the tenant each receive an award letter that clearly states how much funding they were rewarded and what months we're covering and how much and for how long. And each one receives that letter. So it's about a two-week turnaround for the whole process.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that, Vanessa. Does anybody else have any other questions? And again, we'll, we'll have another question and answer part at the end. So if you don't have anything right now and you think of something, we'll have another portion at the end. So, um, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and go to the next presenter with the United Way. Brooke, are you ready? Brooke, are you with us?
There we go. Now can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I turned on the only one thing. Sorry about that. Okay, um, so can you guys see the screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. So let me. All right, get it into full screen mode for y'all there. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna give just a little background just because we changed our name. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit for anyone that's going to all of a sudden be hearing a different name out there. And then I'll go into what we've been doing for COVID and what our plans are going forward. So, um, we recently changed our name to United Way of the Crossroads. And we are, um, actually doing a slow roll out of that this month. And then we'll be kind of hitting the big bang with our rebranding at, um, with the turn of the year. So, um, we are rebranding to United Way of the Crossroads. We serve a four-county area plus the city of Gonzales. So we're serving Victoria, Goliad, DeWitt, and La Vaca counties and the city of Gonzales. So this rebranding, um, is helping us to connect with a wider audience and to continue expanding our collective impact and to better position ourselves to serve the larger community. So we feel that it captures who we are today as we hope to create a vibrant region where all our neighbors have access to the resources they need to thrive. So, um, one of the things that we like to point out is that when the United Way is at work in your community, people get help, others give back, children succeed, and nonprofits thrive. These are the, um, four areas that we're really concentrating in. So I'm going to try to go through a lot of these quickly here because I know what y'all want to hear. Okay, um, so here's some of the things that we have been doing um, at, with our regular funding, with the traditional grant cycle. So, um, obviously, everything that United Way does is centered around a quality education that leads to a stable job, um, financial stability, which is enough income to support a family through retirement, and good health, including access to healthcare. So, um, our everyday impact, as you can see, we, for the 2020 slash 2021 traditional grant cycle, we awarded $538,850 to 16 partner agencies to help fuel the fight for change in our community. Um, some of those agencies are actually on, um, presenters today on this. So, um, you can see kind of all of the stuff that we have through those agencies and through that work, um, and those fundings. More than 10,000 people have been reached. So, um, and those agencies are listed here. So when people call in and ask for help from the United Way, we're not giving that help directly. We actually refer out to our partner agencies, but we will work with the partner agencies to, you know, see what follow-ups might need to be done and things like that to help the people actually get the services that they, that they're looking for. So everyone listed here on, um, this slide are, are, have received funding during the 2021, um, traditional grant cycle. And so they have gone through a very rigorous vetting process and allocations, went through interviews, everything else, so that we can ensure that the dollars that are entrusted to us by the community are used wisely and in accordance with donor intent. So on to COVID-19. So, um, this is kind of showing what it is that we have done during COVID-19 so far. And then I'm going to verbally talk about what we have planned. Um, so obviously, when the pandemic hit our area, we immediately stepped up. We established the COVID-19 Relief Fund. Um, we raised, um, $112,000 within the first few months. Um, so far, 80,000, just over 80,000 has been granted out to vital service organizations. Um, and some of those were direct grants. Some of those were contracts, um, for things like rent assistance and things. Um, and then we have another 10,000 that's going out this month to two more organizations who recently applied. Um, so in all of this, 32% went to rent assistance. 53% of those dollars went to food-related programs and services, and 5% went to agency pivots. Some of our, um, organizations weren't quite ready to take on the, um, challenges of being remote. So we helped, um, them with some technology issues and getting, um, stuff in there. And also for hotel vouchers for quarantine periods and stuff like that. Um, so you can kind of see what it is that the, what we've done so far with the dollars that people served and all of that. So I won't go through all of that. But since we do still have funds remaining in there, and we are still raising funds as well, where we're going to be concentrating now is, um, on gift cards for individuals that we'll be distributing at food distribution sites in towns throughout our service region. So one of the big things that we're doing right now is really concentrating on those outer communities and into those other, um, counties that we serve. So Goliad, DeWitt, La Vaca, and Gonzales, um, getting out there and helping those, um, organizations that are doing their food, food distributions and all of that, going in to, um, give out the gift cards and things to help people with gas and the things that they might be needing as they're driving in to get the, those assistance things. Um, and then we're also going to be looking at unmet needs. So we're partnering with a couple of our, um, partner organizations so that we can help with the smaller things. So when they're seeing a gap that they can't normally cover, we can, um, step in and help them with that. So there might be things, uh, short-term hotel stays. Maybe they need gas cards. They only need a little bit of renting utility assistance and it falls outside of everyone else's guidelines, then we can, um, step in and help with that. So we're working on those MOUs with, um, those organizations right now so that we can do that. And we're, um, also looking, um, community action is one of those. And since they serve, um, the larger region and the area that we serve too, we're hoping that we're going to be able to, um, really concentrate some efforts out there into those other towns. Um, and obviously, we're going to continue to assess the gaps that we're seeing so that we can do the best to fill them, and especially for those outlying towns and communities. Um, so one of the things that we're doing right now too is we are really working towards, um, making ourselves known in those communities so that we can raise dollars, more dollars, and that we can, um, really get in and start working more with the nonprofits and things. So when we bring that back around into what our next steps are, um, you know, we've talked about how the community looks when we're hard at work there. But how are we going to look going forward? And, you know, how will we show up? So our biggest thing is our collective impact. If we're to build a strong community where our kids thrive or our families are self-reliant and everyone has access to nutritious food, we really need to understand the issues that our region faces and rally around those challenges. So we're, we are committed 100% to connecting human service agencies, government, education partners, dedicated volunteers, everyone around the common vision to solve the greatest needs of our communities. We are working on assessments right now. We, um, are working with several, um, different organizations that are doing COVID-related, um, surveys and things in our area to find out exactly where, um, gaps are in services, um, what the impact has been on households, what the impact has been on nonprofits, and just all of that so that we can get the right people to the table to, to, um, help everyone here. So, um, we are working with coalitions and collaborative groups to implement the community-level strategies. Um, one of our biggest things though is that we are ensuring the continuous action happen. Um, it's so that we're not sitting and talking about what the issues are, but actually taking action towards those. And so we're, um, very committed to doing that. Um, and that way, we can maximize the dollars that we're able to invest in the partner agencies and the community initiatives. So, um, a little more about the collective impact. Community connections, this is a big one for us. And we're, um, working on a lot of grants and things right now. And hopefully, we'll be getting some of those so that we can, and really push this forward. So our, um, goal is to connect people in the crossroads to assistance when and where they need it, to establish a single place in each community we serve where a person can go to get connected and the help they need. So what we're doing is working with a lot of partner agencies and, um, the towns and stuff themselves to establish a network of innovative relationships where we're using a warm handoff system of community navigators to improve the quality of life. So, um, this is working with all of you guys that are out there doing these services, putting all this in. Believe me, I've been taking notes on who's doing what, where, um, so that we can have, um, a centralized location to be able to help in those outer communities to gather the paperwork that you need to get the appointments together, um, put together Zoom rooms where people that can't come in, um, necessarily to Victoria to get the help, we can help walk them through talking to you remotely and establishing all of that. We are upgrading our systems right now to, um, have more collaborative Teams rooms and things like that so that we can get this stuff, um, set up and we can all work together. Um, obviously, it's a long process, but, um, the people need help now. And so we're really pushing forward and, um, keeping our fingers crossed for funding to, to get some of these things done. Um, some of the other things we're doing in the communities are, um, around childhood success. We're, um, ensuring each child in each community we serve is kindergarten-ready. Um, our goal is to find a program and local support that works in a unique community. So the types of things that we're doing in the, um, especially in the outer areas are born learning trails. Um, it's a series of interactive signs, offering fun activities for children and families while they're out walking together. Um, we're looking at tiny libraries, which are reading nooks placed in local daycares and stocked with free books for children to take home and read with their families. And then also, um, looking for, um, supporters for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So that would provide each child, every child born in the town or county, depending on what they choose, in 2021 with one age-appropriate book per month from the time of enrollment through age five. So it's a really neat thing, and we're hoping to, to, um, get some supporters for that. And then lastly is the Rural Nonprofit Network, which I'm hoping we have some people on the call here that might be interested in joining. Um, we're trying to put together a network to support the local nonprofits because you guys are providing the most essential services to. So we want to make sure that you have a platform for peer learning and networking, while we can also provide targeted training opportunities, shared marketing opportunities, back office supports. Um, we talked about the technology. So we have a lot of things that we're, um, trying to put together right now to, to help support everyone, especially during this time. So that's really all I have. Do y'all have any questions? I talk really fast, I apologize.
Well, it was very informative. So much for that. If no one has any questions, I'm going to go ahead and just open it up for questions for, throughout the, the presentation. Is there anything else? Anybody like to ask anyone so far?
I see that there's a couple of people with their hands up. I guess now you have the time to go ahead and, and ask your question.
I think they asked already. Dot, did you get your question answered?
No, I, I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is for the Real Grand Legal Aid. Do you assist people with?
I'm so sorry. We, we didn't hear that.
Oh, can you assist people to, for them to become a legal guardian?
Is Deanna still with us?
She's not.
Oh, she must have stepped on.
I just can't send her the message then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Well, um, let me see. I'm trying to get it back to my screen so you can just see me. Can you see me okay? All right. Well, if that, if there aren't any other questions or anything, I'd like to go ahead and conclude the presentation. Again, if you have any questions, if you need anything, you can contact me directly with the number that I gave. Let me, let me pull it back up for you, the number in the can you see my content? Are y'all able to see that? So if you, if you have, do you want to email me if, if you're not sure who to contact about any of the information that we've had today? You can go ahead and contact me directly and I'll get that information to you. And I would like to thank all the participants who participated and helped making this a great resource fair. I hope everybody got plenty of information from this. I know I did. And it's going to help tremendously because I get calls about this all the time. So now I'll know where exactly to send people who are needing these resources. So again, I want to thank everyone who participated. And if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead in, in the meeting. Thank you so much.
Are you going to put the recording on the team's site?
I'm sure going to try. I recorded it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
We'll send out a recording and post it on our website as well.
Yes. All right, thank you everyone.
Thank you so much.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.